I'm going to ask that everybody please stand for the posting of the colors by a WISD color guard. Let's recite the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, guys. I'm going to ask you to stand one more time. This time, we're going to invite Father Carlos to come over and plead his in the invocation.
Loving Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight. I thank you for all those in administration in the Westlaco Independent School District. I ask you for a special blessing for all the children and the youth that belong to the district, and also a special blessing for their parents and the teachers. We ask you tonight that you instill in us a loving spirit, that we may continue to build a kingdom here on earth. Bless us so that we can continue to discern an educational system that is invigorating, and above all, that we may continue to improve in our academics and in everything that we do, so that we can instill values and morals and reach above all the kingdom of your Son. I ask you to bless us in your name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome you to the first-ever WISD Town Hall meeting. My name is Joel Nava, and I will be the master of ceremonies this evening. I'm honored to be given the opportunity to introduce these great leaders to you tonight. At this point, I would like to thank Nap Medical Center on behalf of Weslaco ISD for allowing us to use their beautiful facilities for tonight's event. Before I introduce each of our speakers tonight, I'd like to share a little bit about how my students are revolutionizing the yearbook experience in the classroom. I'm fortunate to be teaching subjects that I love dearly, journalism and photojournalism. My students are learning to utilize today's technology and shaping all of our tomorrows. About three weeks ago, I shared a really neat app that I found online with my students. If you don't know what an app is, ask the kid next to you. I'm sure he does. It's short for application is what it is. And after all the oohs and ahs from my students, I posed a very simple question to them. I said, "Do you guys care to produce another yearbook, or do you want to revolutionize it?" They took it as a dare, and from that moment on, it's been on. They've been working on it. And rather than explain to you the way my students are working with some technology, with a lot of technology, in the classroom, I'd rather just show it to you. It requires a device, which just about everybody can reach into a pocket right now and find that you have a telephone, right? And a yearbook. In this case, this is last year's yearbook right here. And we can turn to a page that I've already preset here. And what you'll see up on the screen is you see the device that I'm using here now. And the device is going to activate some facial recognition software. And you can see how it's... you can wave to the camera. There you are. All right. And as soon as it sees or it senses that we have a... the picture, or once it senses a picture that we've predetermined, in this case, there it is. And she's the one that it's going to sense right now, and look at what happens. You can see the possibilities, okay? We're working on videos for different bits of information that we can upload and have tags to all kinds of photos. And it's not an expensive program anywhere. In fact, the program is free. We download it off of... with any device. I can share that information with you later. But this is the kind of technology that the students are using in the classroom now. And obviously, at both schools, both Weslaco High and Weslaco East, we'll be working together to put more of these online and be able to have a yearbook that's not just a lot of prints and photos and text, but it also interacts with video and videos that you put together, basically. So that's a little bit of information right there that I wanted to share with you. Next, what I'd like to do is introduce our first speaker for tonight. And our first speaker tonight is Executive Director for the Economic Development Corporation of Weslaco. He played a major role in the events last week when both Weslaco ISD and the city of Weslaco, as one community, hosted Dolores Huerta's visit to the Rio Grande Valley. You could say that Mr. Gonzalez is homegrown. He was born and raised in Weslaco. And after serving our country in the United States Air Force, and after receiving a master's degree at the University of Texas at Austin, he returned to Weslaco to recruit and help usher businesses and prosperity to our town. It brings me great pleasure to introduce to you my good friend, Hernán González.
One of the school people who is here, she says, "We're going to have this event Thursday night, and I won't take no for an answer, so you have to go." And there were three other women with her, so I couldn't say no. My mother graduated from Weslaco High School in 1937. She was one of the first Hispanics to graduate from WHS. And when I see the... and all of us, my brothers and sisters, are all products of WHS. When I see that yearbook, I feel so old in the technology. I'm here to welcome you, school board members. Thank you for allowing the vision that Dr. Alejandro has to move Weslaco forward. Now, the congressman is going to increase that challenge. In my pocket, I have a coin from 1761. The big idea at that time was when Spain ruled the world. They were not timid of conquering all of the world. This is a real coin. It's ocho reales, Congressman. I won't show it to Father, but he might take it. But when I met with some of the ladies about Dr. Alejandro's idea, I had just been to a conference in Houston with the International Economic Development Council. The big challenge at the conference was, how do we work to create the workforce for jobs that do not exist today? So this initiative of having a big idea and not be timid about it and move us forward, the kids are going to embrace it. They know no different. The older teachers are going to hate it. It's not what they're used to. And there are going to be some in-between teachers, you know, "Are you challenging us too much? Where do we go from here?" The jobs that many of the students will have in the next couple of years currently do not exist today. That's what I'm learning. In Houston, Texas, today, they recruited a doctor who has created... I don't know if it was created or made, an artificial heart of adult stem cells. That didn't exist not too long ago. So whether it be human organs, whether it be applications of technology, the distribution center HEB has here, 4,000 square feet, 400,000 square feet. A computer at the... from Fruity's HEB talks to the computer here, talks to the stalker, and a notebook pad what they need tomorrow. There are no little notes. There's no paper. It's computer to computer. The car that I drive right now has more technology, and it's a Chevrolet, than what sends people to the moon. I get a message. I don't know why they do it. My car tells me, "Your oil pressure's fine. Your left rear tire might be checked. It's a little bit low." You know, unheard of. The technology, the technicians that work for Paint Auto, they're no longer mechanics. They're technicians. It's all electronics and all computers. They make about $75,000 to $100,000 a year. When I was growing up, if a car was failing, we got a hammer and hit the carburetor. That's no longer done. So the world of today, and Dr. Alejandro is right, but I think his timeline is wrong. It's not 15 years from now. It's four years from now. The jobs that are being created don't exist today. When someone takes a product from research and development to application and then commercialization, has been compressed. The world is very different. So with the bold ideas that WHS has, it will prepare the students for jobs that don't exist. That's very scary. At the same time, just like the Spaniards were not shy about saying, "We're going to conquer the world," the students of today need to be able to do that, not be afraid, because the world has shrunk. Their competition is not East or WHS or in Texas. Their competition is some kid in India, some kid in China, some kid who knows where that wants to learn as much as he can for the new world. We have the distinction of being in the part of the world where getting a public education is possible for everyone. So the limits are only the limits that the children and the people around them place on them. But it's not that books are going to go away. It's that you're going to read them differently. You're going to have a library. Father told us Sunday he has an iPad, iPhone, and a couple of other gadgets. I have a phone with an antenna. I have to catch up. But the world is changing every day, and technology is important. And it's not tomorrow. It's right now. I appreciate the school board for the vision, and Dr. Alejandro for dragging them some with you. And this is exciting. What he's trying to do has never been done before. That's the world we live in. We can't be timid about what we don't know. We have to move forward, and it's exciting. And on behalf of us who work in trying to get jobs for Weslaco, this goes hand in hand with the economy of tomorrow. So thank you very much for being here, and thank you, the school board and Dr. Alejandro.
Thank you, Mr. González. I do know that we have... you have Al Fresco going on. And I don't know if you heard, but it sounds like it's raining out there. So you might want to tell them, "We went long tonight, because you'll stay nice and dry in here." But I know that you may need to go over towards downtown, Mr. González, and you're welcome to. Also, he's going to save us some space over there, because after this, we're all going to make it to Al Fresco tonight. Yes? At this point, what I'd like to do is welcome the school board members that are present here today. Mr. Fuentes, would you please stand? David Fuentes, school board president. We have Mr. Ivan Perez right here with us as well. We have Mr. Erasmo López, and Mr. Oscar Caballero. I'm so sorry. I skipped the show. Thank you very much for being with us today, guys. Next, I'm going to introduce to you Congressman Ruben Inojosa. He was elected to Congress in 1996 and is currently serving his eighth term as a representative of the 15th district of Texas. In Congress, Ruben Inojosa is regarded as a champion for the disadvantaged and has distinguished himself as a very strong advocate for education, housing, and economic development. Prior to his election, Congressman Inojosa served 20 years as President and Chief Financial Officer of a family-owned food processing company, H&amp;H Foods. Please help me welcome Congressman Ruben Inojosa.
Joel, thank you very much for your kind and very generous introduction. It's indeed an honor to come back home from Washington and see the rain that I brought. I had brought, two weeks ago, some of that temperature that we have down there. In the mornings, it's 50, and it warms up to a hot 70 degrees. And I can tell you that it won't be long before those temperatures may be here in deep south Texas. But it's wonderful to get invited to something known as a Town Hall meeting here in Weslaco, sponsored by the coalition that's made up of the Weslaco ISD with its school board of trustees, and that we also see members of the City of Weslaco Commission. That we have a coalition that includes the South Texas College and the strength of the Weslaco Economic Development Corporation, all making a coalition that is taking Weslaco to much higher levels of development and improving the economy of Weslaco and the surrounding area. And I want to make that comparison with what I have learned in Washington, and that is to bring together coalitions of cities, of counties, into what we call regional coalitions that would make us competitive with San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, and El Paso. But before I... can you hear me in the back? Maybe I could get closer to the microphone. But before I get into my prepared remarks, I want to recognize and thank Superintendent Ruben Alejandro and his entire Weslaco ISD for hosting this wonderful Town Hall meeting and for inviting me to speak this evening. Listening to Hernán give his memories and his thoughts of 50 years ago, when I remember that I was going to Weslaco and he was here... I'm sorry, I was going to Mercedes High School, and he was here at Weslaco, together with Texas Supreme Court Justice Raúl González, and with other greats such as Bobby Lackey and many others that are already in the Hall of Fame. I never thought that I would someday walk the halls of Congress and be the representative of deep south Texas, including our hometowns here of Weslaco, Mercedes, and this entire area, which at that time, that I got it... I mean, that I'm thinking of 50 years ago, I think that Hidalgo County was lucky to have 150,000 people. Today, this whole region from Rio Grande City, Roma, to Weslaco, Harlingen, Brownsville, we have almost 1.5 million people. It's grown, and it's a magnificent place to raise our families because we are investing in education, and that's what we are celebrating today. And that is the growth and the improvements of education through information technology. And all that we see in the first part of this program is absolutely amazing because children that are about to become three years of age are now able to get on an iPad and flip it, and then hit a button and get exactly the pot that they want. And it reminds me of my first trip to China with a member... several members. I think there were eight of us, maybe nine of the Education Committee. And we had gone to see how it was that in China, as well as in India, as well as in South Korea and Finland, that they were graduating 95% to 97% of every kindergartner that went ahead and went through the process or through the high school and graduated, compared to ours in the United States at about 70%. I wanted to know what it was that they were doing that we didn't do to have the same percentages of graduation. And I learned very quickly from some of the older, wiser men with white silver hair and a long beard. And they said, "Mr. Congressman, the answer is very simple. It's a simple formula that follows: early reading plus writing equals success in school." And we start reading to our children from cradle till the time they're about three or four years old. By then, they can read and they can write at their level, of course. And I see some eyes rolling up like, "What is our congressman talking about?" Ladies and gentlemen, that was going on 15 years ago, because I've been in Congress 16. And they were doing it. They were beating us in all of the scholastic, international competition, academic competition. And so, another thing that I saw was that they wanted, like in Taiwan, to bring in companies like AT&amp;T and IBM and others in information technology. And they wanted to move into those areas because they were much better paying jobs than working on textiles and working in agriculture and those low-paying jobs. They were way ahead of us in terms of literacy in reading and writing. And that's why I brought that idea, and we created a South Texas literacy coalition of all of the schools from Laredo to Starr County to Hidalgo to Cameron, including the cities of Brownsville and Laredo and in-between. And that has created this coalition that reminds me of the one in Mercedes that I read as the groups. The coalition that I have built is a regional coalition. And if we can think like that, if we can think that we are a regional coalition of cities, we can compete with San Antonio. And someday, we will compete with Houston. And I'll show you that we're at 1.5 million. Bear County is just slightly bigger than that. El Paso is only 820,000 in population, and we were counted in the 2010 census at 775,000 as the official population. And we sued the Department of Commerce to make an adjustment because many of the colonias were not counted. And we asked for a 10% adjustment that would take us to 825,000, as big as El Paso. And I say to you that the strength is in groups, in coalitions, like we are forming. And that's how we were able to compete with Houston on the first GEAR Up program in 1998 that got us $45 million over a six-year period. And six years later, we'd already grown and shown some good improvements in education. And we got the largest national GEAR Up grant for six years of $85 million. And my colleagues asked me, because I'm on the Education Committee all these 16 years, "Inojosa, what in the hell are you doing? How do you do that?" And I said, "I formed coalitions, and we've learned to work together and compete with the big cities." But the results are great. The results are great. Where we were graduating 66% to 70% of our students, now the cohorts that are participating in GEAR Up are at 82% graduation. Not all the schools, because I can take a cohort in GEAR Up with approximately, let's say, 300 in that school district, and another class, same grade, same campus, not in GEAR Up, will be below that. We're making progress. And so, today, I spent half a day, half of the morning, and maybe from 10 to 2 o'clock, at McAllen Convention Center with about 500 children, and I'd say at least 100 parents, and your superintendent, and 12 or 15 more superintendents, at least that many bankers, at least that many businessmen from companies that are big in the area in Hidalgo County. And they wanted to see if we could strengthen the coalition on financial literacy education. And I won't go into all the reasons that we discussed, but in the GEAR Up program, there is one component of financial literacy education. And I wish every one of you could have been there to listen to the statistics from the representatives, Mr. López, from the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas, who gave us statistics that were eye-openers. And of course, Region 1 did their diligence and their, you know, their research and gave us specific percentages and where we are in terms of credit scores and everything about credit cards and problems with our credit score and thus not being able to get bank loans and so forth. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm convinced that what we learned today in something that had lots of cities together, their children, that we are going to find the way in which to use our school district and our city hall, our economic development corporations, like I mentioned to you at the top of my remarks, but make them regional, regional of 200 miles from Brownsville to Laredo. And you are going to see our Rio Grande Valley go to 2 million and then a little bit further. So I wanted to say that with the presentation that you heard... So I wanted to say that with the presentation that you heard at the beginning of the program, it makes me realize that in the past century, the world has seen an explosion of technological advancements that are rapidly changing the way we communicate, the way we work, we teach, the way children and youth and adults learn and receive information. Pioneers like Steve Jobs from Apple and Mark Zuckerberg from Facebook revolutionized the field of computers, of digital devices and social media in ways that we never imagined, chartering the new courses for innovation across the whole globe. As a proud co-founder of the Hispanic Engineering and Science Technology Conference, better known as HESTEC, celebrated our 11th anniversary, just I think at the end of September. But let me continue and say that STEM fields, those careers with a strong foundation in STEM, our students can become the innovators that our country needs to remain globally competitive. I have some short remarks and I just want to add to this presentation that we saw at the beginning of the program. Because by all accounts, jobs in the STEM fields are projected to grow over the next 10 years, providing students with greater opportunities to acquire good, family-sustaining jobs and careers in computer science, information technology and engineering, as well as in medicine. If you look at the top two sectors that are hiring people the last two or three years, it's first, medicine. Medical careers is number one. And number two is IT, information technology. And so we are promoting in our colleges, at our community college and here in Weslaco and in Rio Grande City and in Edinburgh and McAllen, all that area. We are promoting that because that's where the jobs are. The good-paying jobs that will sustain a family are in those areas and we are promoting that. With this in mind, I applaud our Weslaco Superintendent Ruben Alejandro for his exceptional leadership and efforts to make digital literacy a key component of Weslaco ISD educational program here in 2012, 2013 school year. By thinking out of the box, by being innovative, you're preparing the 21st century digital learners for a much brighter future. Yes, in this 21st century, it's vitally important to equip all students, including students with disabilities, as well as our English language learners with skills that will prepare them to thrive in a technologically advancing world like ours. New digital technologies can be useful tools in improving student achievement. As educators, those of you who are here, you work to improve learning and teaching in the classroom. They can utilize these new technologies to support the cutting-edge instruction in project-based learning. New digital technologies can assist students in developing strong critical thinking and problem-solving skills like no other country in China, India and those countries. That is where the United States and our American system of education is number one. In becoming more technologically literate in a variety of mediums and platforms and in being more adaptable to an ever-changing world, we can move forward on all of the progress that we have made. As we expand capacity of our schools to support the 21st century digital learner, we must also work to build strong strategic partnerships in our community to focus on this priority. And in closing, I wish to say that over the last decade, I've watched HESTEC grow and serve greater numbers of students and families. This has been accomplished through strong collaborations that the University of Texas Pan American has developed with school districts, with local governments, with businesses, with community-based organizations, with federal agencies and many, many community leaders like we have in this town hall meeting. Tonight, I'm excited to learn more about the work you've been doing in Weslaco to support this 21st century digital learners. You can count on me to continue to fight in Congress to increase the investment by the federal government together with our state legislatures who, I think, have to get a new governor so that we can support education. I didn't like the $6 billion that he cut from K through 12, Mr. Superintendent, and I am sorry to have to say that I don't believe that our governor has the same priorities as our president up in Washington. And so I say to you, let's let our voices be heard. Let's let our voices count and that can be done at the ballot box. I've seen so many billboards since I came in from Washington the last two weeks of ACT and the message that they send and the goal of getting 65% of registered voters to cast a vote, whomever you want to vote for, but vote. Do what they're doing in Guadalupe County where in 2010, 70% of the registered voters voted. That's why that candidate beat the candidates from the valley to run for US Congress with a much smaller population. We can do it, but we've got to think about our children. If we have a big turnout this November, I believe that we are going to have a much greater attention, both from Austin and from Washington, as we make our case on why we want them to invest in education, invest in healthcare, invest in our infrastructure that includes our highways, our bridges, our airports like yours in Weslaco and others that we have in the area, and our water ports. All of these things in infrastructure have been neglected because we've been at war for 10 years and we spent trillions of dollars. It's time that our troops come back from Afghanistan and that we stop all that trillions of dollars that we're spending at war. Keep up our national security, but I don't think that we can fix all of those countries that are asking us for more and more and more money to fix their schools, to fix their hospitals, to fix their roads while we have neglected our own here in the United States. I'm sorry to deviate just a little bit from the technology, but we only have about three more weeks. And you are here because I know you are interested in your children's and grandchildren's education. That is what is differentiating us from Corpus Christi, the coastal bend from counties that I represent in Goliad and Cuero and those areas. And those community leaders ask me, "Congressman, what are you all doing down in South Texas like Weslaco? How is it that you all can be growing a population like this last census, a 44% increase where they grew 3%?" And my response has been, "We are growing because we're investing in education." K through 12, our community colleges and our universities, we're investing in technology. We're investing in our teachers so that they can be ready to teach STEM careers. Ladies and gentlemen, I see where we have made a lot of progress. There has been great growth. Let's go forward and keep growing and improving this Rio Grande Valley as we have the last few years. Thank you very much.